The border, the first item on the agenda is the new city website. First item is the new city website and y'all remember a few months ago we did a one-year extension to our current website that they plan to go up to over 12,000 a year. And so taking, so y'all then I would take this time to review and study for a alternative. And we've got a couple of other alternatives in here in addition to our old one compared. And we, these three, they're the top three ones that Acta G is the one that I've chosen to ask to go with. There's a number of reasons for that. But right now, we do have the representative from Acta G here. If you'd like to step up to the microphone and turn the push button, make it green, please.
So I'm excited.
And this is Kaylee Hartain and she's direct from Acta G.
Hi, thank you so much for having me this evening. Yes, I provided everyone with handouts for just kind of our scope in what we do when we work with municipalities. We are a Little Rock-based company. That's where we started whenever we began, around 11 years ago at this point. And I personally have worked with over 100 municipalities across the US. And so any chance I get to work with Arkansas cities and towns, it's my favorite thing to do and I really appreciate it. So I personally have worked with the city of Springdale, West Fork, Covina, Charlotte, and a couple others, just to pile off the top of my brain. But I know Randy and I have had many conversations about how do we make the website easier than navigating for residents? And how do we make it easier to navigate for your team? Basically, working with smaller cities, I know that not everyone can be dedicated to pushing out community updates and updating the website. And so with the backend that we've built, we've been able to kind of make that as streamlined as humanly possible, pushing out to not only the website, but a mobile app that will build out that residents can download and keep up with live updates. Council agenda is events that are going on, all that kind of good stuff, they have it right there in their pocket, on their smartphone that majority of people have these days. So that's kind of my spiel. I'll go through every single page with you, but I provided it there for you. And yeah, we'd love the opportunity to represent Case Springs and also have Case Springs represent Acta G. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do y'all have any questions or?
Questions?
The reason I'm asking for Acta G, they're not the cheapest, but they're not the most expensive. Acta G is local, and I say local, they're an Arkansas company. And as you can see, she's here to visit with us today. One that is a little less expensive, is also headquartered in Michigan. They've only got two cities in northwest Arkansas, both of which recently went to them. And looking at the sites, I just don't, I don't like the quality that I saw there as well. Plus, even if you need someone or need a service, it's good to have someone close by. And if you look at Springdale, and the other two cities are Centerton and Belvesta that's on the other one. Springdale is on theirs and I'm not sure about the other cities in this area. But I know the other, the big four are all on, on Civic Plus, Wheeler. And so I thought there was a significant, the one at Springdale was significantly nicer. And in addition to that, their app is, is part of the overall package. And the other company will sell you apps, but they're not, they started out doing apps. And a lot of their Acta G's is designed to go with their website. The other company, you can buy apps and they will determine and build what they, what you need with that. Theirs through their app has the push capabilities, so we wouldn't have to do the emergency civic ready bill anymore. And when you look at what it's currently costing us under Civic Plus, I would actually say it's about 1,400 a year going with that. So that's the reason I leaned that direction. But you've got the information in your packet through you and that's kind of what we'll be bringing at the next council meeting.
We don't have to have an app to access this?
No, you can get it from your computer, but for those people who aren't at home and on the computer much, that have other sources of information. When you have an app as opposed to just loading the website on your phone, it's designed more to fit the phone and for easy use with the phone. And so it works better.
Hey, so Jay, I, listen, I, everything I do is on my phone and I recently deleted Facebook off my phone completely. And so I wasn't getting city news or updates on anyone's lives or anything like that. And so I was lucky that North Little Rock, they went through us to fill out their app. And so now I can know about home closures and things that are going on ahead and having to drive through town every day, so.
So the first 400 pages is zero cost, but after that, how much is?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The first four, sorry, the first 400 pages is zero cost for migration. And how much is it after first 400? I mean, if it's more, more than 400 documents?
So on the last payment I gave out that I provided, our annual cost per year is 5,900. And then instead of the development is 2,900. And at renewal, there's a typical 1% to 5% increase here over there.
What about right here? Do you have?
The 400 pages are webpages. They're not documents like we may store on there that people can.
Well, I said 400 pages, that's documents.
Okay. He's asking about what's it cost after 400 pages?
We, you could have an unlimited amount of pages on our website, or that we have as a document. So yeah, we don't have a limit on there. Alrighty.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Again, appreciate the time. I drove up here from Little Rock this afternoon and I'm about to make the trip back home. So I really appreciate your time to speak to me and all of them.
Thank you. Okay, I want you to shift a little bit from the agenda because we've got one council member that should be here in about 15 or 20 minutes. And she wants to hear the planning information. Sorry. So, the next item that I'm going to go to is the, oh, I'm, it is the, I'm for the franchise fees. And the first one, and these will be very similar, but the first one is Black Hills Energy. And in fact, there are examples of the actual resolutions, I mean ordinances. And the first one is, it tells right in the second line near the left, it's for Black Hills Energy. And these are our franchise fees are determined and set up based on the use of our rideways and easements for the particular residential utility company. And for this maintenance and repair and setting up the process and everything that this is usually done with any city through franchise agreements. And that these, I don't remember the amount, yours was?
It was pretty old. I think in the eighties that it's been a little bit, a lot of them were going back to Arkansas during the gas days.
Right.
It's literally used in Arkansas, their franchise owners and perpetrators, so it was pretty old.
Right, and so you change it, it stays the same and they're, and that can get pretty old and outdated. Yes, she's with Black Hills. If you'd like to introduce yourself, I'll be rude. She saw this on the agenda and continues today. Does she have anything you'd like to tell us?
Good evening, I'm Robin. I said, I know the Black Hills Energy, you have another app available, but it's certainly called Arkansas and we're pretty close to here. You worked with Justin, your attorney on this, so appreciate the opportunity to review it and if you can have any changes. We had worked with him, with passion in Tonnentown, so Tim Wood, the director, he had was almost identical to what that we had worked with him in Tonnentown. You know, we don't love it when communities increase their franchise fees because it goes back to residents or customers. And so Justin indicated that we're discussing starting this January 1. And we would put a pedal message to the Case Springs residents. Be transparent about bills and if they have questions to call, so that's kind of how that, that works. It's passed along the test course.
Was that a fair description that I gave you?
Uh, yes, sir. Yeah. Runway.
Residents? And I know that we've got one, not them, we've got one provider that's trying to ride on someone else's. And they have come in and not followed our guidelines because they didn't have a franchise and didn't know what they were. And they actually bored a couple of streets without permits before we got them and got them stopped. And when they did one of them, they did it through shallow, so there's ridge across the road and that's being raised. But it's, that's, that's part of the reason as well because there are rules and guidelines set up in here that they can then know what's expected of them. And they don't have an excuse if they're not good enough. Should this one say, uh, where this to come from? Where? And still? The strut, uh, possibly, yeah, it should work upon the first franchise, first franchise. That's Black Hills. And I'll make that note, so we'll get that added. But we.
So the one that did the pages, you know, the other ones?
No, and they are going to be dead. But it's not, it's pretty bad. And I will say, and that the electric company and the, yeah, the, both of these electric companies will be, it's for the same reasons, the same speech that was just given applies to all of them, should be. Gas company, the other two are electric companies. They all use our rideways and easements. They all board our roads. And there's, I know one of the phone companies, and they'll be coming later, makes the concerted intentional effort with their lines and rideways rather than getting easements. Because roads aren't expanded that often and they rarely have to move them. But when they do, that's so heavy cost that they expect it for getting back cheaper most of the time. And that's the way their management is playing it. So, but they do follow the rules and they do board roads and do the construction. So those three, that's kind of a, any questions over those? Now, we will take a step back to the planning and we'll have David bring his planning report.
Good to hear. If you don't mind us at the table, maybe we'll look at the computer and the consulting panel over here. Derek is here for Robert once we get to that point, and we'll have some questions about that. So planning commission met last week. We had a few items on the docket. One, you'll see at the top, was the variance request for Eric Overmore, this property located at 579 Ford Lane, Case Springs.
This is, huh?
No, it's not here in close enough. All right, Derek. Okay, sorry. Partial ID was 0510036S000. This was a question of variance that lot dimensions allow for better subdivision layout, street connectivity. And the planning commission voted unanimously to approve this variance request on the condition that the property goes through the reselling process and council.
So what kind of variance do they ask?
Lot dimensions, their biggest thing is their depth because of the layout that they're, because of the shape of the lot, it's narrow and long. If they didn't give a depth variance request, essentially it keeps one street without the capability of having homes on either side. So they just like a road with only homes on one side and it makes it kind of invisible. My computer does not seem to be acting right, so we'll see if this works out. The other item was the Flumery Black for Trillium Subdivision. This was properly located adjacent to Murdock Road, Case Springs. Partial ID on these.
Can I hold you up for one second on this one? I guess I thought you were pulling something out. I am concerned about this one.
Okay.
You could say that, you know, on the other side of the road, on the road, you know, you're approved to that. But then you only have Ridgewood and then this new one going up on the other side. This side, you have Brentwood, Hillcrest down the road, on Brown, we have that one. We've got rezones for smaller lots and with all this red and orange again, and you can say that's a plant for it. But I saw what happened in Hillcrest and it wasn't done well. So that is very much my concern, about putting more homes in that area. There is feedback here, so it's all in business. That is my concern, putting more homes in that area. Because, I'm gonna say it, the density is already, that area, just Brentwood, Hillcrest, that area is already the most residentially dense, as we've talked about before in previous planning or in the council meetings. So I am apprehensive about resoning this too in our group. Because we, we don't even have Hillcrest built out yet and we saw the problems with drainage that Hillcrest had. So I just wanted to express that.
Okay, understand.
And that adjustment, how much setback are they asking for?
The setbacks would be standard setbacks. And there's the density per acre, they're not asking for a higher density per acre. So like they're gonna meet, kind of like what you're saying, if you're worried about the number of homes, the number of homes won't exceed the four lots per acre that R3 allows for. They've looked at getting a bill of assurance with the city attorney and filing at the states as such. So.
So what kind of variance did they ask for?
It's, it's the depth, the depth of the lot as a whole. So like the R3 lot depth, if they can shrink that a little bit on all lots, they can.
That's okay. You don't have much to ask, I don't know how many.
Yeah, I didn't bring that stuff here.
Derek here.
Okay. I mean, if the applicants want to speak to it, yeah, I mean, because y'all will be looking at the rezoning later and we've talked about it now. I mean, this is a very interesting planning mission. We'll talk about it now and later with the rezoning.
Because that's 100 homes and incorrect. If you're looking at about 100 homes, because you said four per acre and it's two point, or 25.55 acres. So that's 100 extra homes going in, and Brentwood that already has 100 homes. And Hillcrest that has, I want to say 125? Brentwood has more than that, when they have 100 homes.
Do you know the number of lots that's projected and predicted?
Yes, Taylor and the Gracitall Associates. Right now, our current concept has 90 lots. R3 zoning is allowed for future land use now in this area that we originally were trying to request R4 to match Hillcrest, so Hillcrest is R4. Then pulled back that request, so there are three to match our current future land use now. The depth variance that we requested is approximately 12 feet on three or four of the roads and homes. And at the data point, it's the width of the existing lot doesn't allow for an equal number of rows of homes. So you have, you have one row of homes and have the street on either side, if we don't do that block, block out variance, which doesn't work very well. So that was the reason for the variance and the planning commission's workload. Do I answer any other questions yet?
But maybe this is for the variance as well as the R3, correct? For the next session?
No, just a, the rezon.
Summary for all, so in terms of R3?
Well, maybe it's conditional on the rezoning. Like it can't happen unless it's rezoned. Yes, you're not making a termination on variance at all.
Yeah, you're both strictly on the, these other things.
That's it, perfect, perfect.
Where were the potential on rain?
Uh, the low area is on the west side of the site, so kind of south and west corner, more or less. Uh, the west side of the site where the, there's kind of a low area that horses wait for in the west from there.
So when it overflows, it goes over on the night, right?
It would go in, in the current path that the water is flowing today, yes.
Are there homes on the other side of that that should be affected by that water?
We're not adjacent to any existing subdivisions immediately. I think a couple parcels over.
They don't need to circulate homes. Because there's, there's no ones.
It's in, yeah, that's true, right.
Stop, stop.
I mean, there's, there may be subdivisions in the future, but if they are, they will, it will be there when we work with them.
Fully required, the design, the intention, the training requirement.
So in four years from now, we're not going to have a flood.
Anything more on this? Sorry, this is not going to work out. Yes, the Flumery Black for the Trillium Subdivision, this is the one that's been going on for a while. The applicant had requested to table this based on some work they were doing on their off-site utilities. So at this point, we're just kind of waiting for them to submit some new requests or things like that. Uh, there's the rezoning for Daryl and Teresa Bush. This is the same property, 579 Ford Lane. Planning commission voted unanimously to affirm the rezoning request and this is on to y'all, which is what you were reading this month, that we discussed. And then, of course, we had the FLE and NSP maps. We've got a new set of maps that's been delivered to y'all in this packet. The planning commission voted unanimously to affirm these with conditions of some changes that were made at that meeting. They've been reflected and sent out and that's what y'all have to wait until next week. So city council lot, as y'all, these are the ones we just discussed. If there's, you know, any other questions you have on that, you know, we can.
Was this Mr. Forman? Is that, is it, is that you?
Sorry. He was engineer of record for the. I'm engineer of record, representing the.
I just want to be sure because it's two different groups of people on the same property, you develop or lend the orders?
Yes, roughly, essentially, yes.
Current property?
Yes, yeah, so current property owners are the rest of the reason and then, okay. Uh, do you have a lot, I guess, you know, we've been working on a couple of different projects. Uh, the project we submitted in conjunction with the Illinois River Watershed, likes the project for next year's CNU that I spoke about in the last meeting. That was one of the projects that was accepted for the CNU conference. So we've had a meeting with the watershed, the mayor, and Madison, and we're going to kind of look at the next steps moving forward, you know, how we want to work all that out. So hopefully hear a little bit more about that going forward. And then the bigger thing is the downtown master plan was voted the ADA plan of the year at the dual state conference in St. Louis back at the, back in September, probably, this, probably. But the, that's the Arkansas Plan Association's chapter, American Plan Association. They have conferences each year. Last year, they had a Thor State Conference. This year was a dual stated conference with Arkansas Missouri. And we were with this at that conference. It's just kind of a recognition of the work we did on the downtown master plan and all that. All that we did to, you know, plan for the future of us.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When these calculations are completed, does the city, they know what's happening?
We, we take this street dedication and it donates the drainage attention on dedication. So we take streetlights on the streets and streetlights are only if they use the lights that are maintained by the power company.
So if the, something happens in the streets, the vehicles.
Yeah, after the hurricane period.
There is the water problem there.
Yeah, we've got some, we've got it there. But that's just a brief commercial. I don't have it all covered yet. Okay.
I do have one more question. Did you verify all that Cal pasture, whoever owns that land, they were contracted with the rezoning west? Or the, or the hearing, they, all those people that own that land, they lived on home there, they were sent, having, correct?
They all should have been sent by area 1122, I gather. We put signs out, there's public signs, and they were, you know, all of them.
Yes, okay. Well, I just wondered about the Cal pasture, because there's no resident in there, you said?
There would have been lately, there's even for, I mean, a lot of reasons, they still be sending there.
You send out the plan?
The applicants did, yes, sir.
On the specific items?
Yes, sir. Usually we, yeah, the green tags, it'll get comped. Uh, all except, you know, we either, they, sometimes they scan and send it to us, you know, lots versus sometimes they give it.
So thank you. And then our next item is to wrap itself, the.
Okay, we can, this isn't working, obviously, so unfortunately, we can go over some of the proposed changes that were made at the recent planning commission meeting. As far as full of the changes from the map that y'all previously saw. Um, there's just a, kind of that sound, east area that were, majority of the changes took place. I think other than, and you can see those on the maps that y'all have in front of you. The barracks got a larger map right there. I think one of the only changes that we made outside of the southeast area was, um, upon Lillard's Lane, we had a bunch of street shown in fact. The Lillard had shot up to Stallings and took that out in the fire.
Um, do you have a summary of all the changes?
Yes, it's, it should be, like with these maps, it looks like this, a summary of the changes.
It's, it looks like this.
Should be right in front of the maps. So this summary is a summary of changes from the very beginning. It's like what is written down. What is on the maps is just a summary of the changes from the previous map that is here. You know, it's already, uh, passed on from the planning commission. So on the southwest corridor, um, you can see, you can start with number two. Oh, wait, if you go to one page, just to start with that, there's number one. You can see, of course, is they added a closed neighborhood collector connection upon Sand Road. This is essentially just a realignment of sands to make it more, um, reversible, you know, in the future that property develops. There's been some discussions about development in that area. So we wanted to show a better road connection point, actually going through that subdivision. And it actually began to collect her like we have envisioned staying in the future. And then to move to the next one, you go to number two. And there is an area that was neighborhood residential, kind of between Lowell and Johnson. And the commission wanted to extend that transition of the next use corridor. That's in that kind of downtown core, and typically worst of all, highways just along those, um, fronts of those properties on, uh, Bollet Avenue slash two sixty-four. Uh, a lot of those properties are either homes that are for sale or old existing homes. And some of them you can easily see transition into, you know, a mix of commercial residential things like that. Uh, number three, it's right behind that, changed that area into neighborhood residential, N R. It was, um, just residential median density form. So where the N R was existing to the west, get extended from Park on Brown Johnson to Clayton. Uh, number four was.
Is it, um, already listed?
It is, it is, yes. Just, you know, if it redevelops or someone who's looking to buy some things and change something there. Well, it was residential median density, so, uh, more like a subdivision, you know, basic lot size residential, this is, the neighborhood residential is kind of more traditional downtown neighborhood. Maybe it makes a different, um, housing types and things like that. So number four was, we changed the area to public institution, this cemetery, cemetery was previously under R M. So we just went ahead and changed it to P I, public institution. And then we added a collector from Johnson to two sixty-four adjacent to the park right there. Um, the only collector, the only street, you know, running between those two is that third street. And its topography can be a little rough whenever you're trying to make it out, you know, onto the way. So this collector was added right there, it makes sense if people wanted to get to the park, things like that. That, you know, the future of the city, you know, wanted to put a road in or someone who's wanting to develop. You know, we can get that arrival dedicated, you know, look at putting in an actual north-south connection in there.
Is the parking, is the parking being?
Yes, yes, yeah, the, the park is the, the green square there that is right adjacent to.
So this is a future land use map?
Yes, sir.
So. I always think of the future being a little farther out. But if somebody wants to come in and do something to property or anything, you're gonna use this map, right?
Yes.
So it's not really a future land use map, it's current map.
Well, it's not the zoning. Yes, yeah, it's what you project happening in that area in the future. You know, as being a master base, you know, to guide development, rezoning requests, things like that.
It's kind of like the time when you used a, a park and a recreation for campers. That a few years ago, down in the trailer. That's what the planning commission said, it meant the use, current, the use map is for a park and recreation.
Okay.
But it was to put trailers, camper, to extend the camp size.
Okay.
So you can really do whatever you want with this, right?
Well, it has to meet the, the trailer parts.
It changes now, so it would be changed again, just really built.
Well, the map can, yes. The map's gonna change, but, uh, like referencing the trailer part, or the, the R V part.
Did you, what'd you say?
I said, it's like, this isn't laws, it's a planning policy, they can be changed like our laws and our resolutions. Everything else, it can be changed.
Well, we didn't change that before, we used it anyway, so.
And, yeah, and we've, and it's been made, uh, several times, these are not coming, they're not lost. They are a guideline, they're a plan. It's a twenty-year plan, the original one was for twenty forty. Uh, some of these roads ain't there, and they're not gonna be there, and they may never be there. But it, it's what we envisioned it could do over the next twenty years.
You all are able to use it as a resource, the day after you adopt it, like the mayor says, you can use it as a resource to automate your decisions on zoning, um, applications that come your way. And the planning commission can use it on zoning recommendations and development requests, that, that sort of thing. Um, so that, once it's adopted and then on into the future.
And the street connections, you know, we see a street connection that's needed in the future. You know, we can require a road to be adopted or to be built out to the standard that we had in class taught us.
Just a, a quick little, uh, background on the time, timeline, just looking back towards the summer, this, this summer. Um, I did want to just mention, um, back on July twenty-one, that's when the planning commission first recommended their earlier iteration of the map. Um, and then you all looked at it in July and August. Um, and then on August twenty-sixth, that's when you sent it back to the planning commission. Um, and I think it was great that you did, um, I think that they had, they did not take that opportunity lightly. They, they looked at it, um, uh, over the next couple of meetings. Um, and then, you know, discussed it on the fifteenth of September, and then as well on October sixth, um, which results in the, the numbered items that are on those exhibits.
Would this also be a guide where we're not giving as many P C D requests?
This won't affect the P C D requests, it's more of a zoning code. So the zoning code is going to affect the P C D requests. Once we actually put into place some new zones that allow for some of these, uh, different, like mixed uses, things like that. Like that'll, that'll solve that a little bit.
This, this map, though, can help the city move forward. I think whenever you are ready to update zoning, I think this can help you update zoning in a, in a more efficient, I, I think quicker way than we've seen the F L U, um, progress. Because you can look at this for guidance, instead of thinking about every color of the rainbow. You can truly think what are the particular zoning, you know, districts that might be appropriate for these different areas.
We do want to go over the. Yeah. So if you look at number six, um, there's a proposed neighborhood collector that is drawn on the western side of the, uh, map and the city's limits. This goes over to Brown Road, loops kind of around through a property and up to Burdon Lane. Uh, this was something the planning commission was really, when we were looking at it, they're trying to alleviate a little bit of an east-west and a north-south connectivity. If there was something like that, it could be done. So, um, number seven was, we had a area that, where we had extended some of the blue neighborhood transition down. And it was actually changed and pushed back up to where it was, um, at previously on the existing map that we currently have adopted. So it's essentially no change, but we had proposed to drop it now and then took it, kind of scaled it back and then put the residential median density, kind of general subdivision, uh, future money use, you know, kind of where.
One question, if that is what, is, would those group at A, A ones to R three? That we're looking at, voting on, correct?
Yes, 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 yes.
So that would be that whole red square would be the R three?
Uh, it's not all of that, no, it's just the, um, top right-hand corner as you look at it.
That, that would be R three?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, number eight was, there was a proposed neighborhood collectors, or there was a proposed neighborhood collector running through Clayton to Ford, um, on the previous map that was brought before y'all in this discussion of whether or not we wanted to take that off, let that be something that would just be filled in with local streets. But local streets still do have a lot of homes that dump out and things like that. And it was kind of determined that we'd best to keep that as collector if we ever did want to get an actual east-west connection between Clayton and Ford, you know, something that he could go on, other than Brown. So that was left as a collector, but there was a north-south collector drawn in, um, from Brown to East Bowl slash two sixty-four. So that's the one you see running from Brown, it goes up adjacent to Green Residential Estates. Kind of jogs over onto the backside of what we were just discussing, the rezoning. And then it goes along the property lines up to Hollywood two sixty-four.
Is that not in the east area there off of East Bowl? The collector coming down? Is possibly east of it, possibly not?
Uh, yes, sir, it's, it's pretty significantly, I mean, I say significantly, it's four or five properties at least. So there.
Where it loses?
It is where it loses, yeah, there's nothing in there right now, currently, I believe. The other, uh, change that was looked at that we felt was something that was a pretty significant new change. We hadn't, I don't think we'd ever looked at before, was a proposed neighborhood collector connection. Uh, we're talking about number nine, where Fields Lane comes up and ties into East Brown Road. There was discussion of, you know, the future, and why we should not take Fields, bring it over in line with the plane. And eliminate, uh, you know, have another intersection and actually line those up. So that was a new one that was changed. And then the Fields Lane road itself was changed to a neighborhood collector. I don't think you'd ever classify it as anything other than local, but in Ford, Ford, there's definitely potential that it's going to be utilized, where people go south to get to Wagoner and shoot over to one twelve, you know, whatever it may be, shoot, you'll take Wagoner over to the highway, you know, take it down to one, go to get to the moving space.
Do you anticipate ever having any incentive domain to put in these collectors?
Do I anticipate that it was what?
Give it any domain to put in these collectors? Before she had some man?
The, um, it's up to the city, you know, but your hope is that most of this happens with development. You know, you, you want to have these in where if there's ever property sold and it redevelops, you're guiding where you want these to go. And, you know, they're not set in stone, they can vary a little bit as far as, you know, if the topography is just slightly better over here, they want to shift it, but someone still wants to put this collector in. You know, that, that's something that, you know, typically the cities are capable of, and working. Um, a, you know, better example of that would be the one upon Sand Road where it loops through instead of taking the two dolphins, kind of nine degree curves. You know, if that was to develop, you know, then we could potentially get a collector through there. But I don't think it's something the city's looking at for even the planning. I would say that if something was done, it may, it would be trying to upgrade the street, we felt like we needed to widen. You know, we were having to work with the property owner to try and alleviate, you know, a width and something. But that's not the intent of it. And the intent, and the reason why they're usually drawing where they are is to not do that. And you're not, it happens, you want to at least get your rivalry that's getting.
The primary example was, I would try to do that in the, I was on planning on council. Uh, Franky Road, where the dog leg used to be with the subdivisions. That was created because Rogers required what certain things needed to do, a turn lane and a off, the off-site, uh, development with the subdivision, and you do the turn lane and the adjacent lane. And the subdivision there had their requirements, the one that was in Rogers. They upgraded to third to the road, went to the dirt road with the bridges. It used to be a county road with the bridge, so everyone used that, that the lane. Turn lane is north of that lane until development came on our side. And now with the development of the property that, uh, north of it, it will now be full three lanes in line of the road on the other end. So a lot of that's done with development and through development to accommodate for the traditional needs. That's the ideal way.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's what we've done in the past, we've done it, went out and done eminent domain for roads and things. I mean, the only time that I know we've used it in recent years was where there was one gap somewhere in the waterline or sewer line front. Other than that, we, we try not to, we try not to do in most cases. Any other questions?
God, we think we'll free to reach out to you when you have questions and comments. God, we think we'll free to reach out to you when you have questions and comments.
So raw, it looks like they did change quite a bit. And this, putting for having maps, this is really helpful. Instead of one huge thing like this where we can walk through, you know, to that one, it'd be good. So I really do appreciate that because it's great to, to make this more beautiful as opposed to creating that and putting it on. It's fair like this. So that's what I'd like to see, oh yeah, like this.
I will say that that is my fault. I do that one for your ordinance, but that's not meant to be your example to go through.
No, but you don't know the intent of this. So that's why we have a manager in place. And so that way, the residents want to see it, it's clearly drawn out. If they pay attention to the arrows, we're going. And then having the summary of it, this is the most detailed we've ever had come to us. So I'm glad we did. So it turned out good, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-two from the last meeting. There is been some confusion, I mean, folks who were here for the most part weren't confused by anything on the back road. They heard it, but ultimately there was a recording that the one that can be heard was Mark when the vote came in. And then there was another recording that you couldn't really make out, but it was that you could hear about three different voices. So for the sake of clearing up any confusion, I'm going to ask y'all to state how you voted on this last week and, or a couple of weeks ago. And this is the actual budget amendment where we didn't make much change, but we did, uh, discuss it a little bit and then we went to vote. So just for the sake of clearing up how you voted and we start with Mark and just mention how you voted.
Mayor, I can't take that. Cause this, I mean, I understand it's in a work session, but I don't do minutes for a work session. So to make the transparency clear, it needs to be done at a council meeting.
Give what, give what?
Please let me finish, please let me finish.
Okay.
So when they, when they do their, their stating of who voted and how who voted, that's great. But it does need to be done at a meeting to where it can be put down and noted in council minutes.
Well, we're not voting again because someone.
I understand, I understand. I'm not saying that, I'm just saying I'm glad for it to be done at a council meeting.
Yeah, I, I think it is, I think you just had the council meeting, the minutes come up. The council can talk about that type, whether their vote is accurately reflected or not, and then they can.
And then a motion.
That's, that's all, that has to be done at a council meeting, not a work session.
And, and I did send a note out to everybody, uh, on that, uh, a couple of weeks ago. But every response I've gotten is affirm that they did vote, but I think we can just handle that in the main.
That'll work. Next item, wait while you're out, we jumped ahead and you got the franchise stuff taken care of. So the next item is the ordinance to rezon. Did you address that adequately in your report or do you need additional?
I thought we had a question, we still have to get here and whatever it's up to.
If there's no additional questions, then the next item is the, um, special call meeting. And if you would, we need to, I don't guess we're going to need to suspend the work session. We just completed the work session unless someone has a comment to make or anything like that.
Mayor, did, did we talk about the franchise ordinance?
We already did.
Oh, you already mentioned.
We did that before you got here.
Can I make one, can I add one thing? I'm sorry, Rob, after that, but, um, we have a number of the franchise ordinances. The plan is to, uh, have those go into effect. The plan is to have those go into effect on December first, you know, on January first, uh, to start the year with a new rate. So we have in the, in the packet, we have, uh, SWEPCO, uh, Black Hills, uh, Carroll, uh, and Carroll Electric. And there's one that I am, am sending you now because earlier today I had a phone conference with Reich Speed, which is the internet company. And, uh, I've been going back and forth quite a bit with them. They have a form or things that they use nationwide. And, uh, I have some changes, uh, we had a number of their folks, they've agreed to all the changes. So, um, I have that one to add as well. It's slightly, it's a little bit different from it, looks a little different, uh, but it's, it's the same, uh, it's the same terms. The terms that we use in there are, are, are in there. So I'm going to send that one to you by, uh, by email, but that one they get included because I just had that call earlier, earlier today. So I was going to make that, make that point, announcing that to you. If there's any questions about that, let me know, but we thought, I have verified with them that they like, you know, they'll be able to do this January one, everybody who said yes. So the plan will be after the October meeting, I'll send signed copy of the franchise ordinances to all the different, uh, uh, folks and tell them to get ready for, uh, January one and they said they all be ready, so.
Anything else? Do I hear a motion to adjourn the work session and to open the special meeting? Got a motion by, by your second?
Second.
Second by Erica. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, like, fine. So we did close our work session, we are now opening the new special call meeting, roll call.
Mark?
Here.
Erica?
Here.
JJ is out, Jeremy is out, Mike? And it's.
Okay. And the first item on the agenda for the call meeting is the, uh, resolution authorized the payment for the back IRS payroll tax. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So.
Got a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Erica, motion by Mike. Is there any discussion? I just want to know what is this confirmation, what period is it for? It's four, Ben tells up in the, in the right corner is for March of twenty twenty-four, it's the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. It's not actually for March, it's for the first quarter.
Have you went back and looked at all of the payments that was made in twenty twenty-four? Because I have those with the confirmation numbers and all of our payments were made.
And I took those confirmation numbers and called the IRS and they credited both of them and said we still owe ten thousand. It's actually nine thousand and something and with the penalty, it's just ten thousand seven hundred.
Did you call any other confirmation numbers for the, for the rest of the quarters?
I looked at the other quarters, I didn't go through all of the quarters.
Cause they've all been paid there.
Well, I'm going by what we have, interest starts in two weeks.
Well, I understand, they all have been paid and I have the documentation to prove that they all have been paid with the confirmation numbers and the checks and the bank statements to show that they have been paid.
Well, in March.
Mayor, I, I, Mayor, I think, uh, one thing someone pointed out is that we brought the, uh, the statement last week to Landmark and a couple of data that advised, uh, uh, paying, uh, in order to avoid penalty. That's part of the scope of, of, of what they're doing, so we're going to, we're going to know that pretty soon. And felt to go throw that out there, but, um, I, I'm not sure it's worth, uh.
So basically, if we pay, then they will pay, then we get a refund.
We get a refund. The part that I paid, when we paid the hundred and thirty-five thousand, we had done it up through the following few steps just to, because the interest has come down in daily and just to ensure that we didn't have any remainder. And we've gotten small checks back for those overages for those two days.
What I'm saying is if you'll be independently look at by the.
Right, yes, exactly.
And I just want to note that this notice date to the statement was printed October sixth, twenty twenty-five. So that's, that's a big thing for me that they just sent this notice this month. So if they end up overpaying, Landmark's going to find it, they're going to have to market. But as of right now, we don't, we owe money. So I don't think it, do the city either to, to accrue interest, but when they already accrued a ridiculous amount of interest and that's why Landmark was so important to get to the bottom of what is going on and the IRS does this money. But the statement date of October sixth, twenty twenty-five, they're saying we owe them money. So I think that could be the best incentive for the city to pay, so we can start bringing interest. And then Landmark do their thing, go through all the files and if they find a discrepancy, then have that documentation and why.
That's what I'm saying, since they have a penalty, if somebody did get it, if they were paying, they did have a point.
Exactly. I just wanted to point out the statement they found that it's right in front of us, right in front of us.
But that statement now it's also shows that there's a lot of outstanding bills that's due for twenty twenty-five as well.
I didn't see that anywhere.
Look on the back page.
Okay. Yeah, and we're aware, we're, we're aware of what's going on there.
So it's not just twenty twenty-four, we're looking at also twenty twenty-five.
Well, let's just, let's just be transparent about the numbers, it says two hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. And that was the eighteen twenty twenty-five. And when we get through the check for over thirty-six thousand, hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, we do pay that? That always come around that time, right? And then we have another one out here from October eighteen, twenty twenty-five. And that shows ninety-three dollars and eighty-six cents for grand total. It's saying this year, we're going to pay over three hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-four cents. So are we paying that as well today? Okay, will we write that down?
Yep.
Get that straight before that.
Yeah, that's, that's, the reason that this wasn't for you is as previous year. Uh, so this goes back to two thousand twenty-four, so we don't have those money in the budget. So, yeah, so the current is, is a part of looking at as well, want to make sure that, that, that's all correct. Part of the goal with Landmark is to, 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 to look back and verify, to provide some support. It's also to, to make sure that it's going forward, so. But the, yeah, the issue, the reason why it's before you, uh, at, at any amount is that it's previous year.
In our, our, there's a couple additional on that, let's say it's hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. But the big one, so possibility that like twenty twenty-five, three hundred and forty-three, one hundred and thirty-five and twenty-four is on here too. So the big one is the ten thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars for eighty-six cents. I don't necessarily pay it just on that personally.
There is one for two thousand twenty-four, you were.
That's correct.
So that's not part of that, that's, uh, right?
The, the ten thousand.
Right, I'm saying that there is one from two thousand twenty-four, how come they didn't add that to it? So it was pay all of it, probably is here at one time.
You mean on the hundred and thirty-five thousand?
No, I'm saying the ten thousand, yeah. We have one, because we want to do everything from past year. So the, the one for two thousand twenty-four, which is here, which is five hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-six cents. But now we don't pay that, so we don't have to pay interest. That's the, that's what we're trying to do today, right? If we don't pay it, if we pay it, penalty will be imposed. If we pay it, penalty will be imposed. It'll, it'll, it'll break us twenty-five percent of the taxes. If you just pay the tax, the penalty never is owed, it's given to all individuals. So if we use those, we pay this, it's one. Um, this thing is at, yeah, we have that one and sixty.
And I'm what, what you're saying there, the top two there on the back.
Right, five hundred and fifty, that's.
I'm sorry, see, they talked about the twenty dollars at the top.
No, it's showing that there is an amount Q of five sixty-two eighty-six, uh, or quarter of twenty-four. An amount Q of five seventy-five seventeen for the fourth quarter. And then it shows an interest charge for both of those. So if we didn't add those to this, we should have did previous years.
Yeah, if, if the deficit is to be.
Right.
But then that second one now goes from, it goes into.
That is the first quarter, it is just the second one, so it's just.
Just the first one.
The five sixty-two eighty-six plus twelve thirty-one.
We mentioned already, you knew the interest we, that we tapped out. I mean, this said ten seven two five, you got there with sixty-two, you said.
I'm sorry, I'm going to say I'm sorry, but I give this.
I understand that the bottom line is on the front, the other stuff is just interest, it's interesting, it's up to this. I don't see a need to pay more than this, ten thousand seven hundred and twenty-five. I mean, they make it clear how much we owe, we don't pay by the twenty-seven for the long one.
Oh, so that's just the breakdown on the back.
Yeah, breakdown of the interest that got tapped out. If you had a ten, three, six, seven, twenty-eight, nine, it's the four, three, two, four, four, three, seven. It goes out to the ten, seven, two, five, four, three, six.
Either way, the, the number is not that much, five hundred and sixty-two, that is, you know, not so much.
I think you have to say that that numbers are.
Is that already part of it, is that what you're saying, of the, of the.
That's a.
See, like, we're saying we owe that much, that, that.
It is a stretch.
And, and any questions, Mark, I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll show you. It's okay, it's okay. Mike, Mike, too. These are all the initials of interest. That's what it says, we know that this day. And we had this number, this number of interest, the bottom line to that number, you can add.
Okay, so it's not only twenty-four, that's twenty-five also.
Yeah, it's got it. So it's interest three twenty-five, and that's not the fourth one. That's the interest on this one quarter.
Okay, yeah, that's not us behind that, the interest on this. From a previous year.
That makes sense.
There were, it looks like, luckily, it brought from me personally.
Is seven, three, four, one. Any further discussion?
I really do understand what you're saying.
Oh, I understand that, this is a hundred percent. But I just want you all to know that there are confirmations of the payments that's been made. And I do understand what the council is saying, that if the IRS does say we owe it and we have money that needs to be refunded or a credit, then that's great. To stop the, to stop the continuing interest in the compound, I get all of that. But I also want the council to be completely understandable that I do have all of the payments and the confirmation numbers of every payment that was made for this year or for the year of twenty twenty-four. I made twenty-six payments and I have confirmation of every single one.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you want to give the roll call that he said about?
We don't have to have a roll call.
I don't like, I want to make sure it's clear with the, with all the other issues.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. So it's, okay, it passed.
Now, I know a lot of cities, they, they'll do a, a roll call on everything, whether it's a resolution or whether it's an ordinance, just for transparency, just for future reference, if that's something that the council wants to go to, toward leaning that direction because the sound in this building is absolutely terrible. So, I mean, that's something that I would look at as well going in the future instead of doing a yes or no.
Okay, this is resolution number twenty twenty-five dash fifty-three. It did pass unanimously. Last item on the agenda is the expansion of the, our amendment of the scope of services for Landmark County. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Some more, so.
Got a motion by MC, do we hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica, and any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to know what's the scope of it.
Sure. So, uh, met with Landmark, uh, on, on Friday, uh, as you know, when we talked about engaging them, uh, we talked about it in the green law procedures, which is where they investigate a, a certain scope and report on, on it. Uh, it started out with, uh, a more general scope, looking at, uh, some payroll issues and they've begun that work. As they've gotten into it, uh, we had this meeting to kind of narrowly focus what the, uh, what the scope would be, that's outlined on exhibit eight. So the last, very last page, it has the, uh, specific scope of what they're going to be, uh, looking at and, and, uh, reporting on, uh, a number of these items under the payroll have already begun, uh, and are, uh, quite, quite a bit through. Uh, others are some areas they're going to continue to, to, to look at, uh, but it's, uh, it's outlined there in, in exhibit eight. Also, Mr. Randy was here too as well, uh, in, uh, his able to provide, uh, kind of recommendations as, as well to, for, uh, for this government.
What, what I like to know is at what point we get a report to some sort of, I know there's some time now here that, I mean, it's bigger than for a wide now.
Yeah. Uh, so, uh, have some preliminary, uh, information. One, one of the issues that we're facing is that the, with the shutdown, uh, some of the issues that we're going to help from the IRS hasn't kind of been, well, come until the, the shutdown is, is over. Uh, but notwithstanding that, uh, we're going to have that pretty soon, but there is some reporting deadlines and they're essentially, uh, you know, they're planning on having, uh, the, the green law procedures, uh, completed by the end of the year, uh, and, uh, so we'll have that report at that time, right? So to where we are by now is two and a half months.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussions?
So we're looking at, we said that, so the beginning of the year, the report. So it'd be at our, probably our first work session maybe, depending on the market. I guess I was hoping that we'll have the return.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that that should be, uh, edited to say twenty-six on the bottom.
Sorry, there, the bottom one.
On the bottom of the timeline?
January fifteen to twenty-five.
Oh, I didn't notice that, you're right.
So do you need to, this we have?
That's on there, uh, that's on there engagement, uh, so, yeah, we'll look at that correctly. I'll look at that.
That doesn't amend the actual resolution, it's just, it's, it's, it's added, it's correct.
Yeah, that's a good catch, we'll make sure that gets changed. Yeah, cause that should be, it's in January fifteen to twenty twenty-six.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
President, so there we go. We got unanimous vote, thank you. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second, second.
All right, I thank you all.